Good evening, and welcome to the Select Board meeting of August 6, 2024. I'd like to call the meeting to order. First thing on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. Is anybody to join us?
(inaudible) (inaudible)
First item on the agenda is the Comcast Cable Television License Renewal Proceedings. Okay, I was instructed I have to read this. It is, "Good evening, welcome to the town of Tewksbury's Public Hearing. On Comcast Cable License Renewal, federal and state law require the holding of a public hearing for the Select Board to consider the approval and execution of the town's proposed Comcast renewal license. This is a hearing for the public to have an opportunity to comment on the proposed non-exclusive renewal license and provide an opportunity for the Select Board to deliberate and vote on the proposed renewal license. Copies of the legal advertisement and proposed license are entered in as public hearing exhibits." By the way, by the way of background, Tewksbury Cable License is due to expire on September 19, 2025. This hearing follows prior public proceedings and diligent ascertainment activity to identifying town and public renewal needs. A copy of the proposal renewal license has been available for public review in the Clerk's Office Public Cable file. We are grateful to the telemedia director, Brian Dorrington, and town manager, Richard Montori, for their diligence and hard work throughout the license renewal process. In this proceeding, we are opening, open to accepting comments about the cable matters relating to the proposed license renewal. Members of the Select Board may also have questions or comments. Before the proceeding to the public comments, I would like to briefly recognize Comcast Representative Kerry Morris. Is Kerry here? I'm not seeing Kerry. Okay.
So Kerry is on Teams. She's going to be joining, so she might just be a couple of minutes. If not, we can keep the proceedings going.
Okay, well, I can just finish reading this while she's, Kerry Morris for a cooperative working. If you're intended, please identify yourself on behalf of the renewal, on behalf of Comcast. We're still waiting for Kerry.
Yes, so Kerry, I'm not sure if she technically needs to be here. Brian Dorrington, telemedia director, for the record. She's invited for the Teams meeting, but we do have attorney Bill August here who could give a high-level summary of the negotiation. Can you hear us, Bill?
Yes, yeah, no, Kerry had requested the remote access number, so, but we don't see her here. I'm surprised. By way of overview, first, I just want to thank, you know, the manager, Rich Montori, who, you know, could not have been more diligent and helpful on, you know, all the different calls and drafting and review, just amazingly responsive and efficient at every single turn. And same with Brian Dorrington and the deputy manager, so thank you. And to the Select Board, first and foremost, for, you know, providing such a team that was so professional and helped us work with Comcast so effectively. I also want to thank Comcast. They were very responsive, a very fair negotiation partner. Unfortunately, you know, we cannot regulate the rates, which people are concerned about. That's off limits under the deregulation of rates. But in terms of what municipalities can negotiate, it's really to support your local programming, your coverage of municipal meetings, of local sports, which is done through your telemedia department very professionally. And so that tends to become, since it's the one area of financial support that the companies have to give in return for use of the public ways, which are very expensive to maintain, so the town should get something in return for that. And they're entitled to an annual franchise fee payment, which Comcast agreed to tweak up from 3.5% of their annual gross revenues to 4%. So we're seeing some growth, modest growth, and in that. And likewise, there's another bucket of financial support in addition to the franchise fee, which is for the operational costs of your three local channels, studio, and staff, which is a full-time operation. They crank out, you know, the municipal meeting and local coverage, they actually crank out more hours of original programming than a lot of these big network affiliates that just take syndicated programs. They do a lot of work, late hours, so they're getting a slight, they're getting an increase to help them keep going on the annual franchise fee. There's another bucket of financial support, which is for capital funding. And that also was increased from the existing license, 1/4 of a percent of gross revenues in addition to the other 4%, from a quarter percent to half a percent. So both categories of support are going up. So Brian and Rich and I were pleased with their willingness to increase support despite the fact that they're losing subscribers. You know, they're having their own problems with the cord cutting. The numbers have gone down, but they are increasing the support. It's a non-exclusive license. I think that's important to let the public know. Everyone assumes, why do they only have one or two companies? Where's the competition? This is a totally clear as day, black and white, non-exclusive license, just like the Verizon license. You know, there's only two companies because no one else is coming to the starting line to compete, but we do provide for non-exclusivity. Verizon was only willing to go to a five-year license. It's a company-wide policy, and it's kind of a hassle for the towns because then they have to do this all over again, and it's a long process. Comcast agreed to go to the maximum permitted under Massachusetts law, which is a 10-year license. So you won't, you know, you're having some longevity and security in the annual and the capital funding. Comcast agreed to a senior discount, which Verizon never does. Verizon has a lot of great things in its package, too, but I'm just highlighting some of the things that Comcast is doing here because it's the Comcast renewal. Comcast will not negotiate the terms of a senior discount. So we couldn't get it to be higher. They have a standard discount, $2 off of the basic entry level tier for income-eligible. They don't negotiate it because, as I said, rates are deregulated, and if they went down the slippery slope of negotiating the discount, it would be regulated by different towns requiring different discounts. So they do have a standard discount. Many towns don't know about it and don't ask for it. We, you know, we're very cognizant of it and did get that. They're also, this is an improvement on the last license in a very important technical area. In order to keep the local programming going, they have to have some equipment called encoders, you know, for the transmission of the local signals from the telemedia channels, you know, the channels are public channel, educational channel, governmental channel, back to the Comcast head end. And they really beefed up their maintenance commitments in this license relative to past licenses. They agreed to be responsible for, you know, all the encoder equipment instead of just treating it like studio equipment when the studio had to maintain it. They're going to maintain the encoders and replace them if necessary. And I think to Brian's credit, he got them to upgrade the three channels resolution level even before the renewal. Most towns just have standard definition local channels, but Brian and Comcast have worked at getting the signals up to a notch higher than most, than almost all the towns. You have what's called standard definition, standard digital interface. It's a higher resolution. I feel, I mean, I do this like 10 of these a year, or 12, 15. This is a great package in terms of meeting all our needs, and we really had a very responsive person, Kerry Morris, who is relatively new to Comcast. She's been there for about a year and a half and incredibly, she's a resource to the town even after the renewal because she's the government relations person, and she is available and very responsive to all the requests. You know, there's a lot of boilerplate stuff, too. I won't go through in terms of right-of-way maintenance and, you know, restoration of the streets, very comprehensive, insurance requirements, performance bond, reporting requirements. That's all imported, but it's very boilerplate-ish and similar to what's in your existing license. The items I really summarize, I highlight the changes, going from 3.5% to 4% of gross revenues for operating, going from 1/4% to 1/2% for capital funding, and the improvement of the taking care of the local equipment. There's one legal change, not from the, as a result of the license, but as a result of the FCC. In 2018, 19, they passed a new FCC rule that the companies could have to have the right to charge for what is now complimentary service to schools and to municipal buildings. You have free basic cable service. We have a one list of sites to get it. We expanded that list. Oh, we expanded the list, actually, by about four or five sites. They now have a legal right to charge for what is free. They've had that right for about five, six years, and they've never exercised it. They continue to provide it for free. But I just mentioned that because that's a change in the legal landscape. Theoretically, they could exercise that right, and if they ever did, I wouldn't want you to go. What did August do? I didn't do anything. Congress did. I mean, the FCC did. All right, so that hasn't happened, but it's reflected in that. So I feel great about it, you know, but not what, you know, we never know what the future will bring. The, you know, the one major uncertainty is the change of technology and cord cutting, and they lose about, you know, sometimes 5% of their subscribers every year, and it adds up. And the payments are based on gross revenues, so as they lose subscribers, the payout is kind of trending downward a little bit each quarter, not a lot in any one quarter, but that trend is happening. We don't know where it'll go. You know, it's, so I feel good about it, and I'm very grateful that we have worked with. Richard's like one of the most efficient and sharp guides on, you know, on these things, so it was great. And I thank you for that. That's all I have to say.
All right. Thank you, Mr. August. Now we're ready to accept comments, if any, from the public. Is there anybody from the public who would like to speak? Seeing none. Board members. Ms. Wellman?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. August. It's a pleasure to have you here this evening to walk us through this document. And thank you, Brian, as well, for your work on this team. I had a couple of quick questions. Bill, you mentioned that the license was for 10 years, but item six says it's for five years in your memo, so I just wanted to clarify that it's actually five.
The Verizon is five. The Comcast is 10. What does it say here?
It says five. Five on item six, page 2.
Item number six says 10-year license term. The Tewksbury Comcast non-exclusive rights license is 10 years. Where does it say five?
Yes, sir.
It says five. The license is for five years, the maximum Comcast agrees to anywhere. However, the Comcast renewal license includes additional capital funding for consideration of the license term, so.
Where does it say that exactly?
Item number six. In this memorandum, we have.
Item number six?
Yeah, it's dated July 30.
Yeah. My July 6 says the Tewksbury Comcast license is for 10 years.
Maybe he has a new version.
Well, we should just clarify that.
What's the date on his July 6? I have July 3.
Yeah, it's July 3.
Yeah, it's 10 years. Okay.
I saw scribblers there.
It's 10 years.
Did I send in earlier draft that had the?
Yeah, could be a different draft, Bill.
Okay, all right, that makes sense. Okay, great. Well, 10 years is fabulous, so.
This is definitely, it's for the 10.
Okay, great. That's.
And another good reason for it, unfortunately, is that on a certain level, you'd think, you know what, let's get another bite at the apple in five years. Why let it go for 10? But what happens is, unfortunately, the, every year, the lobbyists are so powerful, like they get, you know, they always get a slightly better rate, more deregulated in terms of the licensing, so it's good to lock it in because every time we come back a few years later, we're a little bit weaker in terms of what we can do. So 90, I'd say 95% of the towns go for the full 10 years. I haven't seen one go for less than 10 years with Comcast in a long time.
Yeah, well, yeah, I think the last time I did one with Comcast, it was five. But my question for you is, is there any language that they've agreed to reopen this contract if the funding, if the funding schema changes? So if the FCC changes it so that we can charge for streaming, or they can, they can give us funding for streaming, pretend that happens, in 10 years, I don't think that's entirely unreasonable, or it'll all go away altogether.
The audio is not the greatest. Is there changes in terms of what aspect of the funding?
I'm curious to find out which, hold on a second. Brian, which mic is picking me up? Is it this one or is it a room mic? Because I think I'm pretty loud on this one.
Yeah, okay, now I can hear you.
Okay, so my question is, if within 10 years, the funding schema changes by the FCC, is there going to be, or have you considered language to reopen the agreement so that we could benefit from that?
Not, no, no. Right now, the funding is just based on the percentage of gross revenues, which the FCC could not take away our right to get a percentage of gross revenues because that right is part of the Cable Act. So it would take an act of, it's not something the FCC could do. It's still a great question, but it would have to be coming from Congress. Congress has not touched that provision since its adoption in 1984, so it's been around for a good 40 years. No one has tinkered with the right to get up to 5%. You know, we took the 4% because we didn't want to have the rate pass through just any higher. We just wanted a modest tweak. So, but there's no re opener based on, on that. And I've never seen any bill to change an existing license. There have been some bills floated to deregulate the companies to some extent further than they are now, but even those bills have left intact the franchise fee payments, you know. So we don't have anything on that, but I don't see risk on that. The risk to funding is from market forces, from just the losing subscribers.
Right.
I don't think it's from legal change.
I agree that, I understand how the funding works, and I understand, I understand the schema that this agreement encapsulates. I just, with a 10-year contract, if there is any kind of a change, I just think that we should be able to reopen it or have a side letter that understands if something changes in the market such that your subscriber, you know, it's not just limited to, and I understand it's an act of Congress to change the, you know, enabling act, but I would just like to see that piece. So, and it's a far consideration. It could be a side letter. Other than that, I congratulate you on the capital payment increase. I think the 4% is an appropriate charge for the pass-through, and I think that'll be great and help support our telemedia department, which is very important. I think the 10-year agreement is great, but just with the codicil, that I have some concerns about reopening it. And the senior discount's fantastic. And Bill, always, you do a great job, and I am appreciative. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Riden?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Bill, Brian, Richard, again, thanks for all the work on this. Couple of quick questions. First question is, I had very similar questions to Ms. Wellman's, too, so I'm going to kind of continue down that line. The existing contract, was that a five-year or a 10-year contract?
Let me, let me just go back to it.
It was 10. I have that, Bill. It was a 10-year.
Okay, but the existing Verizon is five?
Five.
Okay.
How about I have a year, yeah, two, yeah, 10, we just want to check. Term is, yeah, 10-year license.
Okay. Yeah, I have, I have similar concerns just because that space is changing rapidly and with the continued decline.
Wait, I missed the first part?
I have concerns similar to Ms. Wellman's because that space is changing rapidly about a 10-year contract. Again, we've gotten lots of, made lots of good progress on the contract, increasing the payments, but, you know, as the numbers continue to drop, they're going to seek new revenue streams, and I do believe that they're, the legislature is looking at how to manage streaming services. So my concern would be, does this preclude us from, if that change were to happen in the legislature, do we have another bite at the apple, or are we locked into only this for 10 years? If the law changes at the legislature?
It depends on the language of such legislative change because most of the efforts to deregulate, which so far we've gone, you know, have not gone through, to touch that stuff. I don't even know many bills would be prospective, you know, for licenses as negotiated after the effective date of this bill, you know, there shall be this revenue stream or that revenue stream. But right now, there's nothing to reopen it if there were legislative change.
Okay, thank you.
But yeah, I mean, a shorter license term would put us more at risk because if there was legislative change, you know, we would be more vulnerable to the new legislation after the expiration of the existing license.
Yeah, it's a dead-bledged sword, right? The legislation could go either way. If it, if something does happen, it could improve our position or not. So again, great contract. I appreciate it. My other question is through you, Mr. Chairman, to Mr. Dorrington. I noticed we got this fourth channel in here. It says we, you need a request from the Select Board 270 days before it's live. Are you ready for that channel?
So it's a, it would be an HD channel, and with this contract, I believe we're just going to keep the three channels because if you were to go with a fourth channel, it would be an HD channel, and technically, it would still only be three channels. So we'd have to change one of our SD channels to an HD channel, and that would kind of mess up the channel numbers and stuff. So while we have that headroom from both Comcast and Verizon, we think for consistency sake, in terms of both image quality and keeping the channels one public, one education, one government, we think the best bet at this point is to stick with just the three channels that we have, but there's always room down the road.
Okay. That's very good clarification. My follow-on question is, so our three existing channels are standard def, not high-def?
Correct. They are, they're standard definition.
Okay, I misunderstood that. I thought we got.
They're notch above standard definition.
Yeah, so it's SD, SDI, so it's standard definition, you know, standard digital interface. So yeah, it's, it's in between, I would say.
Okay.
But if I could just clarify or make one comment, I think, about the legislation. So the legislation, I think, that has been talked about is for streaming service, OTT services. If that gets passed, and Bill, you can correct me if I'm wrong, nothing precludes us from collecting that money from this contract. So if we're suddenly getting money from Amazon, Netflix, Verizon, those OTT services, that would not impact this contract. This is only with Comcast. So we'd still be, we'd still be able to get those funds.
Right, and under that legislation, we would be able to seek the streaming fees from those other companies, so that would be in addition to what we.
Perfect. Thank you very much. I appreciate the answers and great work on this. Thank you. It's live, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Graham?
Thank you. Most of the questions have been answered, but you did mention the senior discount that goes on that. I don't see a lot of language in here about that. How did they, how does it come about? And how have they made a way of it?
You have the side letter?
We don't have it.
Okay. They don't have that yet, but we have a side letter of agreement with that.
Okay.
Okay, all right, so I will resend that. That's, they refused to put that in a license because they considered that rate regulation to have it in a license. So they have made the side letter commitments to the senior discount, and they honor that. They've honored everyone they've done by side letter for the last 20 years. So we have that side letter, and, you know, I'll make sure you have that.
What is, what is the age of the senior discount?
Hold on. 65. It's, they will, although, is pleased to provide a discount to qualified senior discounts in the town of Tewksbury. To that end, Comcast will offer a discount of $2 off its monthly digital starter service level or that digital level of service which most closely resembles digital as of the rate card in effect as of the effective date of the renewal to persons age 65 or older. And there are four income eligibility criteria, either receiving Massachusetts Fuel Assistance, Property Tax, Elderly Asset Income Abatement Relief, anyone who has, you know, the elderly tax abatement, Medicaid or Mass Health recipient, or recipient of supplemental security income, SSI. It also says that if anyone has a discount pursuant to the prior license, they have the option of discontinuing their existing discount.
Okay. So the discount is there, but how do they, is it an automatic thing that you have that goes out to seniors, or is it something that they have to apply? Like, how will they be aware of it? You may have a senior discount, but if they're not aware of it, how will they get it? Like, is there something that's put out?
Yeah, 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 you basically, it's not something that Comcast advertises, so it would be something good for public service announcements, Brian, or an insert in some type of, you know, municipal informational mailing, if you have any kind of town newsletters or whatnot, or senior centers. Yeah, that goes, that gets out by word of mouth and municipal information sharing.
Mr. Chairman, I can make sure we get it in the senior center newsletter, and we'll send something out on the website.
And I appreciate if, Mr. Dorrington, if you could, if this is approved, if you could put something out on the, I love the discount, but if no one knows about it, I find it hard to believe a lot of people will take in, you know, take advantage of it.
Yeah, that's a great point. That's a great question, great question.
Yeah, it's a great point, and Jason and myself would not mind going over to the COA and speaking to people in person as well.
Yep.
Thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
I have one question. How many current seniors take advantage of this discount?
We don't know.
That I do not know.
They don't report that on your quarterly, Bill?
It's not advertised. Probably not many.
Yeah.
They don't report that.
Okay, thank you, Mr. August. That's all the questions I have.
Thank you.
And there's nobody in the public that wants to speak. We already went through that, so. Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Riden, second by Ms. Wellman. All those in favor, sending a by saying aye.
Aye.
Your votes aye as well, that's unanimous. What is the pleasure of the board?
Are we looking for a vote to ratify the license agreement?
Is it a vote to accept the license agreement or approve?
Approve.
I would approve.
Okay.
All those in favor, sign by saying aye.
Aye.
If your vote's aye as well, that's unanimous. What is the pleasure of the board?
Are we looking for a vote to ratify the license agreement?
Is it a vote to accept the license agreement or approve?
Approve.
Approve.
I would approve.
Okay.
There is a motion, an approval motion there, which I would request you take a look at for the reason that the state requires us to file a copy of the license once signed with a brief statement of a reason for the approval. And the motion has a very general statement of reasons. Do you have that motion? It's at the end of the opening statement.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion for the Comcast license renewal. Acting in its capacity as the Statutory Cable Television License Issuing Authority pursuant to Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 166A, and finding that the cable license renewal proposal of Comcast reasonably meets the license and cable-related renewal needs and interests of the public and the town, and finding that Comcast Cable Communications Management LLC, Comcast, financial and technical qualifications and Comcast's proposed support for the local programming channels, studio facilities and services are reasonable to meet town cable license needs. And based on the recommendation of our renewal team consisting of the telemedia's director, the town manager and municipal cable council for approval of continuing Comcast as a licensee serving the town, the Tewksbury Select Board hereby approves that Comcast proposed non-exclusive renewal license effective September 20, 2025, immediately following expiration of the current license on September 19, 2025.
Motion made by Ms. Wellman, second, and a second by Mr. Ryder. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
If your vote's aye as well, that's unanimous.
Thank you, Bill.
Thanks, Bill.
Thank you. One minor technical procedural point. I signed the license too, so Rich and Sam, when, once it is signed by the Select Board, don't send it over to carry at Comcast, because I have to sign it too. So send it, you can scan it to me.
We'll send it to you, Bill.
Thank you, folks.
Thank you.
Great seeing you. Okay. I'm very informal and always here for questions. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Okay, next on the agenda is American Outside Advertising LLC, special permit application for billboard. It was continued from our June meeting and our July meeting. Is there anyone here for that?
Yes, yeah.
Can you introduce yourself for the record?
Yeah, Jamie Cutlass for American Outside Advertising and Stephen Ross, Principal. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Bye.
All right. You want to give us an update?
Yeah, we were here the sixth, we had a lengthy discussion. We had compliance with everything except the 1,000 feet for the residential use, but they went before the zoning board of appeals late July and they granted a variance to that provision. We don't have it yet because it's a 20-day appeal period, but they did grant it, so we believe that we're in complete compliance now and it's a good fit for the town and for us as well. So we would answer any further questions, but.
Board members, any questions? Mr. Ryder.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is something I thought was important, that the applicant went to the board of appeals for the approval. So I think this satisfies my concerns about setting any precedent of what, within that 1,000 feet of a residential, within the guidelines of the regulations. So I think, you know, this is an opportunity for the town to bring in additional revenue with limited impact. So I'm good. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Ms. Wellman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Cutlass. Thank you for coming back this evening. I'm happy to see you. I have a couple of quick questions for you. One is for you and then one is for Mr. Sadwick through the chair. So for you, how, I appreciated your maps. I appreciate your process. How far is the billboard from the closest building at the Residence Inn right now?
I would have to look, but I would say, so it's 100 feet in the air, but the edge of the signs, the building, and I don't have it in front of me, I would guess maybe 50 feet.
Yeah, if that. It's probably within 50 feet, I would guess. Okay, thank you. And my question, Mr. Chairman, through you to the Assistant Town Manager, is what is the current status of the construction of that facility moving toward housing?
There's at least one or two of the buildings there that are, have received their permits for the conversion from hotel to residential. They're going to continue doing this up through January, I believe, and then all of them will be converted over by January. So the hotel will lose its designation or its flag there and it'll all be residential. They're going to start leasing, I think, shortly, within October, November timeframe of the buildings as they're being completed.
The buildings that are not being converted right now, that are, are they still operating as a hotel?
Correct.
Okay, but they're all intending to move over to residential?
Correct.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yep.
That was my only question. As far as a comment, I appreciate the work that you've done. I totally don't support this at all because I think it is not the spirit of the law. It's not the spirit of the bylaw that the town passed at town meeting not to put billboards in front of homes. By this logic that you've pursued, any, any housing development can put up, can get a permit and start to build, and as long as the ZBA grants a variance, you can put a billboard there. And I just don't think that's what town meeting asked us to do, so I don't support it. Thank you. I supported it in the other location that you brought forward a few years ago, which was over by the Longhorn, but I think that was withdrawn. And I actually called into that hearing at the state, at DOT, yes. And I testified in support of that effort. So it was, it's not, I mean, not against billboards, but I am for housing and I am for upholding the rule of town meeting. Thank you.
Mr. Mackey.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate that you guys went to the ZBA. We did have a quite extensive discussion last time. I don't have the large map in front of me, but it looked like it was closer than 50 feet from my last recollection. I'm a proponent of billboards in general and the correct location, especially as a revenue stream for the town. But the fact that the proximity to the building that is going to be residential, I am, I am not in favor of. And I'm really not in favor of how we're kind of skirting the intent of the bylaw. I know you guys went to the ZBA, I understand that. It doesn't, doesn't sit well with me. It seems kind of an end around the intent. So that's, I'm not in favor of this location. Again, I wish there were a better location for it to go, or if it could go farther from that building, but I believe it was less than 20 feet. I think it was like 18 that it showed the base from the corner of the building. I understand it's going to be vertical. It's going to be up in the air.
It's only like a two or three-story building, right? I don't believe anyone could see anything outside their window but a.
I just wouldn't, I wouldn't want to look out my window and see that and we have to think about future residents. So again, I can see it on the other side of the parking lot, there airs, I can see it. I have always been a huge proponent of billboards as a revenue stream. I just, I'm not a fan of this location. So I appreciate all the effort, but my, my opinion on this matter has, has not changed since our last discussion. Thank you.
Mr. Krapp.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate you going to the zoning to ask for, even though honestly, at this time, you don't even need the waiver, if you would come forward while this was there and then something gets converted over to a billboard. We have a lot of rules and regulations that are happening in this town. Sort of, it's like you can't build something here and then the business changes and something goes on. But you're meeting the criteria of what the rules are now. You've gone to zoning, you've asked for all those things. It's going to be 100 feet in the air. You're not going to see any of it other than a pole. And, you know, this is multiple times we've, we've looked at billboards where people have said, you know, we don't want them here, we don't want them there, and then Lowell puts one on our town border that's overhanging our property. They're getting the revenue and we're not. You know, we've been, the residents have come to us, asked us to find different ways to find revenue. $2.5 million of revenue is nothing to sneeze at and all over the term of this contract. So I appreciate what you've done. I really don't think it's going to impact any of the residents and to try to find a reason to deny it, I think we're, the residents have asked us to try to find a way of revenue, we're doing it. And you've done everything that we've asked you to do, so I'm in favor of this, so I'll let the rest of the board speak to it.
You all set?
Yep.
I tend to agree with Mr. Krappman on this. You went through the process of going to the ZBA and I appreciate that. I wasn't happy with discarding, as Ms. Wellman says, the bylaw, but you did get the variance from the ZBA, so I'm willing to support it.
Thank you.
So this is a public hearing. Any members of the public would like to speak? Hearing none. And have a motion to close the public hearing.
No move.
Second.
A motion made by Mr. Krappman, second by Mr. Ryder. All those in favor, sign by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well. Any negative votes?
Nay.
Okay, so we have four to one with Ms. Wellman voting nay. Okay, what is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the special permit for the electronic billboard located at 1775 Andover Street.
Motion made by, second, Mr. Krappman, second by Mr. Ryder. All those in favor, sign by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, chair board's going to vote aye. All those opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed.
Okay, we have Ms. Wellman and Mr. Mackey oppose. It's a three to one, three to two vote, measure passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you, members of the board.
Excuse me. Mr. Sadwick.
You need four?
Oh, you need a supermajority.
Because this is a special permit under zoning, you need a supermajority, so you need four out of the five for it to be an approval.
Okay, so that means the application is denied.
Correct.
Failed, I should say.
Geez.
Sorry, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Okay. Residents, it's a residence section. Any residents would like to speak? Seeing no one rushing up to the microphone, new business. We have a donation to Veterans Services from the American Legion Post. Mr. Montori?
Just a $100 donation to the Veterans Services Donation Fund. I just need the board to vote to accept the amount and we'll send a letter to the American Legion Post thanking them.
Okay, thank you for that. We have a motion to accept the donation of $100 from the American Legion Post.
So we'll.
We have a motion made by Mr. Mackey, second by Mr. Krappman. All those in favor, sign by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well, that's unanimous. Okay, up next is the Town Manager Search, Consult and Town Manager Screening Committee. Looks like the committee went home, huh?
Yes.
Didn't want to hang out for this?
They moved me forward.
All right, can you introduce yourself for the record?
Yes, Mr. Chair, thank you. Giant Petron, Community Paradigm.
The floor is yours, sir.
Okay, so first of all, thank you to the board for hiring our firm, Community Paradigm, to do, to assist the town with its search for the next town manager. So I'm just going to give some brief outline as to some of the process. So as you're aware, I want to thank the chair and the vice chair for getting me introduced with the, the search committee prior to. Met with them for the last hour and reviewed the process. So what's occurred is that after we were hired, we have spoken to each of you. So you, many of you were with me, Jen Lefferts, from our firm, and we've put together a position profile. We've interviewed, you know, many of, you know, Rich and his department heads, you know, in the process as well. You've seen the position profile that's been advertised. So the position is out there, it's advertised, and we're now recruiting candidates for the position. So when I say we, Community Paradigm, is, the principal of our firm is Bernie Lynch. Bernie is a retired city manager out of Lowell and also served 20-something years as town manager in Chelmsford. I'm 40-year retired municipal employee, so my last position was town administrator at Town of Brolington, just down the street, so I retired five years ago. And so, you know, we'll be the principals on this search, you know, assisting in this process. So the, the ad is out. It's been posted to the MMA. We've sent it out to all the town managers and assistant town manager administrators in the state, and we're now calling folks. So we're having that process of recruiting to, you know, talk about candidates. This is a good position. This is a great position. Rich and I were, you know, talking about this earlier and I said this to the search committee as well. This is one of those places where I think it's a great opportunity for the next person to come in. Rich has been doing a great job, but now time for the next person coming in. And so this is a very good opportunity. I think we'll get some candidates, but it's been a very difficult market, you know. If any of you have seen the searches out there, sometimes it's 15 to 20 candidates is what's being received in any of the markets, but we're hoping we'll do a little bit better, you know, in, in this position, in this market. So we're out there, we're talking, and so the applications will close August 22nd. So that's when applications will be closed. From the week after that, I'll be working with the search committee. They will get all the applications, all the resumes. They will see everything. And we are meeting on September the 4th. So we have a meeting set and at that point, we'll be making the decision as to the, which candidates to invite for a screening round interview. We'll be doing interviews the week of the 16th, and so we'll hold interviews at that point. Once they take those, about seven candidates for screening and then whittle that down to hopefully three or four finalists to bring to the board, our firm will do a complete background check on each of those candidates prior to you making your decision. So we don't wait until you've made a decision, then do a background search. We do background search prior to, to make sure, you know, the last thing I think you want is to hire somebody and then find something that, you know, you did not hope to find in the background. So you'll get a report from us prior to. So we'll be ready for interviews and I'll work through Rich and, you know, through the chair of the board as to some dates in October for interview, for you folks to have your interview with the final candidates. So that's pretty much the big picture, you know, of the process. So again, we're working the process now. We've been talking to folks. We'll get the candidates in on August 22nd. We'll meet with the search committee September 4th. They've set their dates. We've got the screening rounds nights set where we'll interview and we'll be moving forward with this process. So again, I think that's, you know, in a very short, you know, review. That's the process we're going through. So I'm here to, you know, answer any questions. We spent about an hour with the search committee going over all their questions as to how to interview, what the questions will be and so on. And so I think they are pretty much set at this point.
All right, thank you. Mr. Krappman, any questions?
No, I just, not about the process, but I know we have a number of towns that are going to be, all be looking for, that I know of, I believe, we're one of four. Is there any other communities in the area?
So in this area, these days, it's all about location. Because again, nobody's moving to take these positions because of conditions outside, you know, you know, basically the real estate market. The one town that will be making a decision prior to you getting to it will be Lexington. I understand 11, they had 11 candidates for that position. So, you know, one person may be chosen for Lexington. I'm not aware of the other towns who have openings at this point, making any decisions prior to. They haven't, to my knowledge, begun their process, you know, of search in this area. So right now, Lexington has, you know, they started prior to and they've been in the process a little bit longer, but I don't see an issue, you know, with lost candidates in that sense.
But am I correct with there's, there's four locations or is there any more of those?
Well, I know of two others that are without managers in this region, so yes, four in this region of, you know, logic communities, yes.
All right, well, that's all I have. Thank you.
Mr. Mackey.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Petron. Thank you for the effort on this. I have no questions for you. I have no questions for you. Godspeed, and I look forward to seeing what you and the committee bring forward. Thank you.
Last time we spoke, I then saw the Red Sox lose four games.
See, I wasn't, I wasn't gonna ask you, because after we had that discussion, I checked up on those scores, and I wasn't gonna bring that up.
Yeah, no, no, it's like, you know, didn't bring the luck, you know, out, out there with them.
Hopefully it was an enjoyable trip.
We, we had a great time.
Thank you.
Ms. Wellman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. John, it's nice to see you again. I had two quick questions for you. When you met with the search committee?
Yes.
Has any mechanism been given to them about the feedback we gave to you and your firm, what we're seeking, the qualities that we're seeking in a town manager? We have not done community charades, we haven't done any of that.
Sure.
We feel that we're confident in what we believe the community's looking for. We just want to make sure that the search committee has heard that.
So they will receive the position statement?
Okay.
And as you saw, you know, there's a whole list of characteristics. And so we'll, when we're going through the questioning stage, I'll make sure they understand, you know, that the characteristics are, you know, what you should be comparing the discussions with the candidates to.
Okay.
You know, and again, you know, I think we have in there about a seasoned person, you know, someone has the financial skills.
There you go.
Communication skills.
Yeah.
Understands some of the projects that need to move, move forward in this community. All that was, that's why we do that position statement, you know, which we think is very helpful, you know, because I'm using that when I talk to candidates.
Right.
And so the, the screening committee will have that, and will be reviewing that.
Thank you. That's, that's exactly what I wanted to hear. Secondarily, I know that staff sometimes feel anxious going through a search process because there's always a sense of who will the new person be, what will things be like, how will things change? And so my request, if the board wants to entertain something like that, and depending on your position, is that the candidates would be able to meet with the department heads, the finalists would meet with the department heads to, it can be the same day of our interview, or it could be another day at the.
We could certainly have that discussion. There's, you know, I can work through, you know, Rich on that if you wish.
Yeah.
There's different systems, you know, communities have done different things.
Yes.
You know, to, but yeah, now's the time to bring it up. So if you want to, you know, have the discussion, we're here to assist.
Yeah.
You know, so if that's what the town wants, you know, we'll work with you with suggestions on how to, you know, move forward with that.
Thank you. Yeah, for the board's discussion, for either a thought for tonight or the next time that we meet, I do think that we may want to ask our finalists to meet with the department heads. We have an excellent team that's worked with Richard for years, and it's an opportunity for candidates to learn a little bit more granularity, a way that Tewksbury operates, and answer their questions as well as give the department heads a chance to meet whoever their future boss will be. So I, I've seen that happen, I've seen that work well, and I would put that to the board. Thank you. I have no more comments. Thank you very much.
Mr. Petrin?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Hi, John, how are you? I will agree with Ms. Wellman. As a 32-year municipal employee, I've been on the other side, gone through many town managers, and that was always the concern. Who's gonna be our boss? We're so used to working with this individual, how's that gonna affect, what, what am I looking for? What, do I need to start, I mean, there's always that. Do I need to start looking? What's, what's their idea of what they want to see? So I think that may help. But again, I think Tewksbury is in a very good position.
It is.
You know, the past boards, and Mr. Montori has put us in a really good position, and it puts a spotlight on Tewksbury. And I hope, you know, hopeful that we're gonna find a, a seasoned candidate that is gonna come in and continue the good work that Richard's done, and continue to work with our board. So looking forward to the process, and, you know, excited to see who the committee brings forward. So thank you again, John. Appreciate it.
Actually, Mr. Ryder asked my question, and that is, how attractive is Tewksbury to the candidates?
I think it's very attractive personally, and been putting that out there. You know, as you know, I've done many of these searches, you know, and Bernie and I have done these, and sometimes I'm having to explain a community, you know, or situations that are occurring in communities. I'm not having to do that here. So I think that's, that's a positive piece. I think, you know, what I'm saying to candidates is, you know, Tewksbury is gonna be facing the same things a lot of communities are. You have, you know, you don't have financial questions of today, but you will have, as everybody has down the road.
Yes.
You've got the housing question, you know, that you need to address, but Tewksbury has done very well for itself. You know, when I can talk about, you know, I've said it several times already to candidates, and when I say they've spent $9 million on opera funds on water, you know, they say, oh my, you know, that's what we should have done, you know. So I think, you know, you've got some very positive aspects. Your team is excellent. I'm not even talking about Rich. I'm talking about your team. You know, beyond that is, is, is a very good team. People see that. And, you know, the discussion we had, you know, with Steve and the assistant, you know, town manager piece, you know, I think that is, you know, having a seasoned veteran, you know, who's gonna sit in that seat for a little bit of time for transition periods is, you know, a great opportunity. And so again, your, your department heads, you know, I enjoyed, I met with several of them. It was a very good discussion, and, you know, I enjoyed doing that. And so you've got people who know what they're doing. So I think overall, you're in a good location. You've got opportunities. You get challenges, but you got more opportunities than challenges, and I think people can see this is a position, like when I went to Burlington, that was a great place to be, you know, you know, until I retired, you know. You know, I had a printing press in the basement where I just printed money when I needed it.
It's true.
You know, and so, you know, it was, it was a great place to be, as I think, you know, Rich probably thought, you know, his last bunch of years, you know, was here. You know, so it's a good opportunity.
All right. I have no more questions. Thank you, and you are now on a mission.
Okay, great.
All righty.
All right. I've got a appointment, my therapist tomorrow, now that I'm meeting with another six board, you know, but I'm good here, so. And I'll work with Rich on, you know, continue to work through him and the chair, you know, in, you know, scheduling, you know, the future here, you know, as to dates and everything else. But again, I just want to stress, you know, screen, search committee went well tonight. We've got our dates, and, you know, I mentioned it to Rich earlier, we'll talk, you know, in the next couple of days, and start planning out the rest of this.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Thanks, John.
Next on the agenda is Tewksbury School Facilities Study Committee Appointments. What is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate Mr. Tom Bowley to be on the School Facilities
Motion made by Mr. Krappman. The chair will second that motion.
Mr. Chairman, are we, do you want votes, or you want nominations?
That was, I was gonna ask.
What's that?
Clarification, just that.
Yeah, what's the process?
How do you want to, how do you want to handle this, Mr. Chair? Do you want us to, each one of the members go through, make a nomination, or do you want to?
If there's a motion made to appoint, I think we should go through individually.
You, you mean, you should, we should? I, okay, I, I think we should let all the members make a nomination if they have one.
Okay, that's fine with me.
Mr. Chair, we have three, correct?
We have three.
Three appointments, correct. Okay, just one, just so the residents at home know, we're not just, how many that we have to appoint at this point.
So Mr. Krappman made the motion for?
Mr. Bowley.
Mr. Bowley. Mr. Mackey?
I would make a motion to appoint Bruce Panletis.
Mackey is Bruce. Ms. Wellman?
I would make a motion to appoint Jamie Cutlass.
Mr. Ryder?
I make a motion to appoint Stephanie Todd.
And I'm gonna make a motion to appoint Mr. Pleniotitis.
Okay, so second that motion?
So that's the second one.
Okay, so we have on the floor, Mr. Bowley. Motion made by Mr. Krappman. I hear a second. Chair will second that motion. All those in favor, sign it by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. That's three. All those nay?
I'll vote aye.
You, you'll vote nay?
Yeah, I'll run.
Mr. Mackey?
It was 5-0.
It was 5-0?
Yes.
Okay.
I didn't hear it. I didn't hear it.
Okay. Next up, Mr. Mackey's nominated, Mr. Bruce Pleniotitis. Do I have a second? Okay, we have a motion made by Mr. Mackey, second by Mr. Ryder. All those in favor, sign it by saying aye?
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well. That's gonna be a 5-0, don't hear any nays. Okay, Ms. Wellman, nominated, Mr. Cutlass. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion made by Ms. Wellman, second by Mr. Krappman. All those in favor, sign it by saying aye?
Aye.
And chair votes aye as well. That's another unanimous. We have our three. So, Mr. Montori, can you notify the three victims, I mean applicants?
Yep. Do that tomorrow.
And also, Mr. Montori, could you get us, each of us a list of what this committee, I, I don't have the school committee appointments, I know Mr. Mackey and Mr. Ryder are on it, but a copy of what the entire committee is?
Will it be online?
Yeah, it'll be online, but I'll make sure the board has. Did the board vote the school committee's choices at the last meeting?
Not.
We did?
I didn't think you did.
The school committee voted on their applications.
We didn't have to vote on the school committee appointments.
We don't have to vote on the school committees.
I believe when we were forming and approving this committee, I asked if we were gonna allow that, and the board decided not to let the school committee appoint to positions if they had to come through us. That's why those names.
But we delegated those seats to them.
I thought we delegated that to the school committee.
You think, Mr. Mackey, do we have a procedural issue?
I believe, yeah, we had to appoint those. I believe that's why the, the chair of the school committee sent us those names.
I thought we approved those last meeting.
Yep.
I remember Alexis Bosworth was on that list.
We did vote.
Yeah.
I thought we voted at the last meeting to approve the.
School committee.
School committee picks, and then we were, the three remaining of the committee was at the next meeting.
Be good to just check.
Yeah, we might need to want to verify that. I don't have.
Yeah, just for clarification, I believe we voted on.
We did.
I know we looked at it.
We, and I believe we voted on it, so.
Well, to clarify, I'll say, so I'll make a motion to approve the, the list of applicants that was submitted by the school committee.
I'll second that.
Second.
Makes it easy, yeah. Okay. It's that way, we don't have to come back if we didn't do it. Yes, I'll make, I'll second that motion.
Motion made by Mr. Krappman, second by Mr. Ryder. All those in favor, sign it by saying aye?
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well.
Very good.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, could we just have the manager's office send a thank you to all of the individuals that did take the time submitting applications and coming in for interviews? And please, you know, ask them to look at other committees that are available, that they may be an asset to.
All right. Next is up is September 3rd, 2024 state primary warrant. Mr. Montori?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is just the, the document from the town clerk for the board to approve the ballot for the state primary on September 3rd, 2024.
Board members, any questions? Hearing none. What is the pleasure of the board?
I'll make a motion to approve the warrant I submitted by the town clerk.
Second.
We have a motion made by Mr. Krappman, second by Ms. Wellman. All those in favor, sign it by saying aye?
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well. That's a 5-0 vote. That's unanimous. Next up is sale of town-owned land. Mr. Montori?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In the board's packet, there's a memo from the assistant town manager, Steve Sadwick, that was sent to me regarding the recommendation to approve the sale of three parcels of land the town meeting authorized the board to sell. The first is Assessors Map 81, Lot 119. The second is Assessors Map 81, Lot 193. The third is Assessors Map 81, Lot 140. The town has put out a notice to bid on the property. Butters provided us with bids, and the memo outlines the various amounts that we received for, for bids. We had a single bid for Georgia Road, which was Lot 81119, and the amount's at $2,600. Assessors Map 81193 on Delaware Road, we had a single bid of $5,000. And then finally, on Maryland Road, 81140, we received a bid of $25,000. I'd recommend that the board approve the sale of these lots, and we can move forward with the purchase and sale and transfer in addition to approving the sale, if the board could authorize me to sign any and all documents relating to the sale.
Were these the only bids on the properties?
They were.
Okay, what is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chair, I do have a question through you to the assistant town manager. Mr. Sadwick, do you know the size of these individual lots?
That's my question, too.
Just for the residents at home? And if so, are there any, do any of the winning bids have a budding property to the parcels?
Part of the process that we go through on this is that we own, we do publicly post this as a bid, but our, we have a bylaw that talks about sale of undersized lots to a butters, so they get the right of first bid. So yes, each one of these, the bidder has an abutting property to. And the lots are all less than a half an acre. I think two of them are at like .1 acre, and the other one may be at .2, I think, if I remember correctly.
Okay, and last question. With the purchase of these town-owned lots, do they make these lots buildable?
They will add, in one instance, it will add to a existing lot, and that one may become a buildable lot. It may become a single-family buildable lot.
Which lot?
The.
Lot 140?
140.
140?
Yep.
Okay. That's all. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Ms. Wellman, you have any?
No.
Ms. Mackey?
I have no questions. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Krappman?
Mr. Sadwick, before you go too far away, one last question. Thank you for bringing this information, but with the sale of this lot, it doesn't landlock any butters. There's, I know when we have town land, sometimes there's trails that could go through uptown property, or, I think it doesn't, there's no property that abuts this that it landlocks anybody.
Nobody will be landlocked. And in fact, two of those lots are significantly wet themselves, so one of them, I think four-fifths of the lot itself is wet. So that one, I don't foresee affecting anybody. The other one has significant wetlands on it, but it's not at a four-fifths number like that.[1771.53]
I just want to be certain of that, thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's all, yeah. Mr. Chairman, if you want, just quickly, just to go back to Mr. Ryder's question, map, Assessors Map 81, 119 is .05 acres. That's on Georgia Road. The Delaware Road parcel, 81, 193, is .05 acres. And the Maryland Road, which is 81, 140, is .19 acres.
Okay, we have no more questions, what is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to authorize the sale of these three lots as presented.
If you're going to approve it?
Approve it, approve the sale.
And authorize me to sign.
And authorize the town manager to sign.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Ms. Wellman, second by Mr. Mackey, all those in favor, see them by saying aye?
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well, that's unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Mr. Hardeman, you're up. Water main break, review and update. If you can just state your name and your position for the record.
Evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Kevin Hardeman, Public Works Director.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Thank you.
The floor is yours. First of all, I want to thank you and your crew. I think you did a fantastic job, you know? As I said earlier to other members in this board, that, you know, when the lights go out, nobody expects them to come on, everybody wants them on immediately, and I think you did a crack of jack job in going through the town.
Thank you.
And I appreciate that, yeah. So I'm going to turn it over to you.
Can I just jump in? So, the purpose of bringing Kevin in, this is, and I've talked to each of you since the water main break last Saturday, that caused significant impact to the community where we had loss of water, loss of pressure, couldn't find the leak, which Kevin will go into in more detail, forced the Department of Public Works to do significant flushing of hydrants during the week to clear out the lines and clear out any brown water. You know, we spent the last week reviewing what happened, putting a plan in place to address issues regarding brown water in various neighborhoods. And we've looked at it from an after-action process, where we are going to put some things in place to improve upon notification to residents and just doing things better than we have, not that we did anything bad, it's just we always do this with any type of situation. As the chair mentioned, the staff did an outstanding job. I want to commend Kevin in particular, and Dave Lozot, the deputy director, for their leadership and being on top of this issue. But the staff who were out there in the street doing the work, worked every night, I think, with the exception of Monday. They also had a break over the weekend that they worked on, so I can't thank them enough for the work that they did. And I know there were a lot of complaints and a lot of concerns and a lot of issues raised by residents, all understandable, but the staff did their best and worked hard to resolve the issue, so I want to commend them for their work and commend the administration for their work. And that goes to the people in the office who handle a lot of complaints and a lot of calls. Again, we have reviewed the response, we've reviewed our information, we got out to residents, and like in anything we do, we can always improve, and we will make those improvements. So, I'll have Kevin take it from here and review what happened from the day of the break to how we finalized the work.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Montori. So, basically, I'll run through the timeline of events from the time of the break until this past Friday, when we really deemed the incident over. So at 5:30 a.m., the water treatment plant was monitoring the system, and they noticed that there was a significant draw in the system, which is indicative of a break. At that point, they called in the call man who came in. At that same time, they were receiving calls of no water within the town. At 5:48, the call man notified myself of the break. I mobilized. A few minutes later, I contacted the town manager as well as the assistant director, let them know what was going on, and that we were out, we knew we had a break in the system, and then we had to find out where it was. We had no reports of a break on the road, normally there's water surfacing, we had nothing to go on as far as eyewitness reports, so we mobilized to the town and started to look for the break. At 6:31, I was in the office getting maps ready, received a call from a resident on Terramore Drive who had no water, you know, confirming what we knew, but, you know, kind of gives us an idea of, you know, the scope and the scale of the impacts. At 6:32, I contacted the police department to send out a code red message to let residents know that we're aware there's a break and that there's a lack of water or completely no water to some residents, and that we were working to resolve the issue. At 6:35, the call man, the chief operating engineer, and myself were out on the road looking for the leak, trying to find out, you know, we looked at the normal locations. We know, based on the amount of water that we were losing and the pressure that was lost, that it was asbestos in that pipe that had broken. We knew the fact that no one had reported it, no one saw the water, that it had to be near a water body, right? So we narrowed down our search and were out on the road and mobilized to find the break. At 6:55, the first code red message went out to the residents, letting them know the situation. At 7:32, I contacted a leak detection company to get them to mobilize in case we weren't able to find it with our normal operations throughout town. You know, as we all know, the sooner you can make those calls to start mobilizing people, the better. So we made that call to try to get a leak detection company in so we could, would have assistance. At 8:26, I called in admin staff to start answering the phones, knowing that residents were going to be up and that we needed to provide them with information, provide them with answers. So the admin staff was brought in. At 8:45, I contacted the Andover Police Department after we noticed, in our driving around, the chief operating engineer noticed that they had a road closed for a water break. We know we have an interconnection with them on Kendall Road, we didn't know if that was possibly part of the problem that we had to deal with. Andover confirmed that they had two water breaks that day, one on 133 and one in another part of town. So we were gathering information on that to see what the scope of that issue was and how that possibly would connect to what we were dealing with. At 9:11, the call man received a call about water on Maplewood Road up off of Fisk. So we went up there, went to look at that situation. Got out there, that was a small leak, it was just surfacing on the road, wasn't the problem that we were experiencing throughout town, so we mobilized other areas in town to look for the break. At 9:30, the water break was discovered on Main Street, just south of the Misselli Bridge. It was off the road, it was behind the guardrail, it was in the bushes, and it was flowing into the Shawshing River. Unless you were on foot, on the side of the road next to the guardrail, there's no way to see it driving around. So, at 9:45, GPW crews mobilized to the area, started getting on the valves, cleaning out the valve boxes so we could get this main isolated. At 9:51, DigSafe was notified to get that process going so that we could get digging as soon as possible. At 10:30, we began the process of cutting the roadway while waiting for the DigSafe, they have to respond in an emergency in an hour, so we had to wait until that was valid before we could start digging, but we can start saw cutting the road in the meantime, we can start loading the trucks and getting everyone to the site. At 11:00, we had the valve shut off, the broken section was isolated, and DEP had been notified of the break, and we were starting to get the system pressure restored. At noon, the pressure was building back up in the system, that was returning back to normal. The admin staff had been released for the day, knowing that we had addressed most of the concerns, and we had code red messages out there, letting residents know what was going on. By 2 o'clock, the repair was complete, we were purging the line and starting to backfill the hole. By 2:30, the water was turned back on, repair was done, and the trench was being backfilled, and the road was paved. At 3 o'clock, we released the crews to go to the high points in the system to start releasing air. As we know, you know, when you have that much water draining out of your system, people in the high areas who start using water are going to possibly introduce air into the system that we have to flush. At 4:50, we got a report from the water treatment plant that the Ames booster was back online, air was purged from Catamount, things were back to normal. And we had, system pressures normal by Sunday, everything was all set. As we all know, with a major water break like that, we're going to experience dirty water, right? To kind of put it in context, on a 95-degree day, we may pump one, about 4.2 to 4.5 million gallons out of the system. The reports I was getting from the water treatment plant during this event was that we were pumping over 6.3 million gallons per day as our flow rate out of the treatment plant. Pumping that much water is going to increase the velocity of the flow in the system, and it's going to scour anything that's in those pipes, any tuberculosis from the cast iron mains and things like that are going to get churned up in our system, and it's, with the amount of speed that that water's traveling through the system going everywhere, it's going to get into just about every part of the system, and it's going to take some time to flush that out. So, Sunday, we were actually dealing with some sewer backup issues at the Andover Street Pump Station, so crews were in for that as well. And then come Monday, DPW crews began flushing our system to get the dirty water out, we'd been getting dirty water calls, and we had received countless voicemails, mostly were hangup, but we knew that we had received calls and people were looking to get in touch with us, so we knew we needed to get some information out there. So we began a directional flushing program, which is something that the town has never undertaken, is something we wanted to do last year when I came on, but as we all know, the board may not know that our flushing program starts after Labor Day. I'm sure the board remembers what happened on Labor Day last year with the big water main break at Ames Lodge. So we had to postpone our flushing, and we started to do it this spring, and as everyone knows, we got extremely high temperatures, and with high temperatures comes high water use, and we postponed our flushing this spring. Now, this past Monday, the 29th, after this break, we got back into that, and we started doing directional flushing. We knew that we had to flush the system, but we knew that we had to do it the right way. We had to get all of this dirty water out of the system. So the crews flushed on Monday until 4:15 that night, they finished for the day, they got back in, and they came in and mobilized and got their assignments at 7 a.m., but we knew that we wanted to avoid the peak, you know? We wanted to avoid churning water up and flushing the system while everyone's getting ready to go to work and starting their routine. So we waited until after that morning peak until about 8:30, 9 o'clock, to get out, and we flushed the system on Tuesday. We got reports of dirty waters, and we were chasing those around town whilst, we have what we call the, kind of a spot crew, they were going out and addressing the dirty water locations. And we also had three to four crews, depending on the day, assigned to certain sections to flush. And crews were in on Tuesday until 10:30, same thing on Wednesday, crews came in and started flushing the system after the morning rush, they stayed in until about 7:30 on Wednesday night. Again, flushing on Thursday, that continued till about 7:30. And then on Friday, same thing, they were in till about 8:30 Friday night, flushing the system. That's when we consistently were getting clean water on hydrants, we knew that most, if not all, of the dirty water had been purged from the system, and we could kind of rest easy at that point, that we had addressed the issue. So that's the basic timeline, and as the board may know, Sunday morning, around 1:30 a.m. on County Road, we had another water break. It's in a location where we've had almost a dozen now, we've got 11 in that neighborhood, so our crews know that area, they know the valves to isolate, they got down and they had the water back on between 8:30 and 9 o'clock, Sunday morning, for those residents.
All right, thank you. Let's start with Mr. Ryder.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Kevin, thank you. You know, believe me, I've been sitting in your seat many times, you know, 32 years in the industry, I've had major water breaks that been in the middle of a river, scratching our heads. I think from my perspective, and I think one of the biggest concerns I think residents have and had during this event was communications. And I know Richard, Mr. Montori, talked about this. I think the more communications, whether it be, I know a message went out on the town's website, but, you know, we have a very active residence page, and people are just looking for information. So, as you know, if you don't get the information out, somebody's going to create that information. So, I think, you know, lessons learned is if we can get that information out, you know, and I've talked to Richard, and you've mentioned that there's going to be a protocol in place, and also a standardized message that is going to get disseminated to all of the staff, because, you know, resident A is calling, they're getting one message, resident B is calling, they're getting a complete different message. And understanding the frustration of the hundreds of calls, we have to put the residents' perspective into play here, that it's been a few days, they've either won, you know, it was a beautiful summer day, people may have had, you know, plans, people coming to their houses, a lot of unknowns, and then they get messages that it's safe to drink. And you see the numerous pictures out there, and I understand the concern, yes, it, you know, in a perfect world, it is safe to drink, it is only iron, but residents, you know, they don't want to hear that. They want to hear is, you know, what happened, how did it happen, and what are we doing? What is the town doing to stop this? And, you know, you talked about, I think there was a couple other things in here, Assau Street Tank is offline?
Yes.
So, that throws another wrench into things, you know, if you can touch on that, why that's offline, and also talk about the plans for County Road, you know, there's 12-plus leaks out there in the last few years. So I think, again, I know what it takes to do the job, I know what it takes for these guys out there doing the work. Once they found it, they did a great job doing it, appreciate all the work that they put in, you know, thank the staff. Again, we, we're not going to stop water breaks, we have an aging system, the town has spent a significant amount of money, and hopefully you can touch on that, of what has been spent in the last, you know, 10, 20 years on water repairs, and how we address this moving forward. Talk about, if you can touch on leak detection, what that is, because a lot of people have a lot of questions, you know? I know what it is, and I've been trying to explain to people what the process of that is and how that helps find that small leak that may turn into the big leak at some point. But again, I think communication, more information out to the residents is really going to help the department understand, and let residents understand what you guys are going through as well. I'd love to see every main in town that needs to be replaced, let's do it, but again, we have to be conscious that there is a cost associated with that. And we do have, you know, a five-year plan, and we're continuing to allocate the resources towards that. So, I appreciate you coming tonight. Again, I know you have been working diligently on getting this done, so I appreciate that. Thank you again. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Ms. Wellman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate Mr. Ryder's comments, particularly regarding communication. Thank you for being here tonight. Please convey to your staff, I'd like to echo Mr. Holland's comments and Mr. Montori's comments, that that's a lot of work and a lot of mystery, and I like to solve mysteries, but not on, not on my weekends if I don't have to, so, and it's just, it's a demanding job, and it's sometimes thankless, so I am grateful for all the work that was done over time, but then also to continue to chase the problem and get ahead of it. And I appreciate your follow-up in the timeline, that's a lot of detail, a lot of folks don't have any idea, you know, how, all the pieces that go into it, so I appreciate you bringing that forward. I want to say that I thank you for the information you've put on your website over time, because I could point people to it when they're asking how much money we're spending and all those kinds, because they're aggravated, and I totally get it. And you have a lot of information there, and that's good, keep, keep doing that when it's not busy, that information's helpful. It's also helpful for me, you know, to look at it myself and remind myself. So I have a couple of quick questions, but to build on Mr. Ryder's comments about communications, I know that in the moment when you're I know that in the moment when you're having a crisis, the people answering the phones often aren't able to send out additional messages because they're overwhelmed, you know, practically speaking. I think it would be good if there's a public information officer that you designate on your staff who is that person who gets that training, who can come off and, you know, put out a message on social media, answer some questions, you know, work with the police department on their code red messaging and help them to get those messages out because I know they're getting calls too. And so I think that would be, that'd be great. What percentage of water mains that we have in the, in town, would you classify as needing to be replaced at this point? I know we have all different kinds, I know all of that and there's a lot of detail, but round number, what do you think?
It's approximately forty percent.
About forty percent?
Yes.
Okay, that's great. So and we have a historical system and I read that it's most, a lot of the asbestos pipes were installed in nineteen fifties, is that right? Fifty-one to fifty-three, is that right?
Yeah, so the town undertook the water distribution system project, got approval in town meeting in nineteen fifty. Construction started in the spring of fifty-one and they completed sixty-six miles of main and about around thirteen hundred services by the end of nineteen fifty-three.
That's a big, that's faster than we put in the sewer system.
Yeah.
Town sewer, wow, my sympathies to those individuals. So, okay, so these are legacy systems that we're doing. Okay, I appreciate that, that forty percent is a lot, but it's not, it's not, you know, overwhelming. And I know that this board and previous boards have made in recent years under Mr. Montori's and yours and your predecessor's guidance, water a priority and we're going to continue to do that, I think, until we get through to the other side and then we'll just be continuing to take care of our water as they age. Yeah, so and do we have a sensor system to detect leaks on our, on our water? Is there any sensor system built?
We do not. We utilize the treatment plant, they have a SCADA system on the tanks.
They have SCADA, okay.
Right, and their output, so we know how much water's going out, you know, especially in a situation like this where it's five thirty in the morning, you wouldn't expect there to be a high flow.
No.
So that helps us identify when there are breaks.
Right, but we don't have a system, so you can kind of triangulate or kind of get a sense of where it's.
No.
Okay.
No.
All right, I don't know if that's useful or you can use your Maya grant to help with that or something along those lines, but I wish you the best of luck because that's impossible, as Mr. Ryder said, when it's flowing into a body of water, if it's in a culvert or something along those lines, it's really hard to find. So the fact that it was found so actually pretty quickly, within five, five and a half hours, something like that, is pretty great. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Mackey.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Montori, Mr. Hardeman, thank you for how you've managed the very large break that we had and then the rapid response on Sunday's break. Professionalism, amazing as always. My comments on communication have already been covered. You've been in this role for a little over a year and you've always been improving, so I kudos to that and I think there were some good comments that were made, so look forward to seeing what you do with those. Fact of the matter is, as has been mentioned, we have an aging infrastructure system, hasn't been well maintained in the past, that's not your fault, that predates you, predates Mr. Montori and we need to do something about it. As the stewards of the community, I believe we as a board need to engage. We upped it from one to three years the last time that this, we had major concern, one to three miles the last time we had major concerns, but even at three miles, this is going to take almost twenty years to replace the past its end-of-life water main. It's already been mentioned, it's expensive. I am not one to look to spend money, but this is a prolific issue across the town. It impacts every resident. And again, I want to be clear, I'm not, this is not targeted at you or Mr. Montori. I think we need to come up with a plan with the support of Mr. Montori and Mr. Hardeman and we need to come up with a plan that we can be clearly defined, it can be measurable and that we can publicize to residents so they understand what is going on. Everyone, I think, is aware that we have an aging system, that's why we have all these breaks, but it is infuriating and I think we all get plenty of calls when these things happen, even if it's not a big break like this. Breaks in neighborhoods are consistent. I've had lots of discussions with Mr. Montori and Mr. Hardeman over the past few years, lots of data has been gathered. I think we're at a point where we need to sit down and figure out how we can, we can solve this, because to me, twenty years is not acceptable. Realistically, I don't think it can be done in under ten years just because of where this pipe is located, but I think it's incumbent upon us to lean into that and figure out what, how we scope the project, what it's going to cost and then how we can fund that project and ultimately bring that to town meeting for approval where if we communicate it and it's clearly defined, I do not think we will get a lot of resistance. I think in closing, my ask would be that we put something on the books for a working session for this board and we sit down and we discuss how we can improve this.
Okay.
That's all I have, thank you.
Mr. Krabman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Hardeman, thank you for coming in. I understand it's, you know, your job is to get out there and fix these things, but and I understand it's, you know, the social media, all the information that goes on, that's the secondary job, you know, you're out there to find the problem and resolve it. I was on the website, I was just looking through it here. I know as part of the update, you say that, you know, we send out messages, but on the website, there's no link to those social messages that go out. So I'd like to add that to the website if we can. I know you put out Twitter feeds and things like that, but on the website, there's no link to that. You have to search for it. So when you're putting updates, because people don't know what social media we're putting it out on. As part of our update that we did in two thousand and twenty-three says we send out social media things, but unless you know which one to look, is it on Facebook, is it on Twitter, is it on, what is it on? I know our police department sends out updates, you may be sending updates, but if we are putting out information, the links to those should be on the website to find them. If, so when people are getting calls and they see the website and there's nothing there, that's what they're saying. You are doing it, but there's no way of anybody, unless they do the search. So I think that would be helpful. The next thing is, you know, that was such a significant water main break that it shut down literally the whole town. That brings it to a higher level of priority. So I know we have a plan to replace water lines throughout the town. Did this change the philosophy of like what, does it move something to a different priority and how should the, you know, like this broke? This section has broken before. Along Hill Street, there's been a section that's broken. That is, that exact area, I remember seeing cones and barrels sinking into the ground years ago. So this isn't something new, it's been happening for a while. You know, the residents want some comfort that, and I don't have one, I doubt if you do either, that, you know, in the next six months, that same line isn't going to break again. But I do know that when you make a replacement and you, with that kind of pressure, water tends to find the next weakest point. And this pipe is from the fifties, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's one thing to burst in the middle of the summertime, but if it bursts in the middle of the wintertime and you got that kind of water, that's, I could imagine what happened if that broke and it was flowing across a roadway in January. It would be a nightmare to be able to turn that off and flush the water and get things through. So, I mean, is there any, for one thing, I'd like to know, like, what is the length of that pipe of like that, of that main and how, you know, and what's the timeframe for a replacement of that?
So through you, Mr. Chair, to Mr. Krabman. So that eight-inch water main extends from Victor Drive to Hafners, the limit of the tip project that was done. You know, it's about two miles. That is on the schedule for, I don't want to say replacement, we're not going to replace that main. We have a twenty-inch ductal iron main from nineteen ninety-three that runs parallel with that. What we did on the northern part of town prior to the Mastaw project was abandon the existing AC main and tied everyone over to the twenty-inch main and that's what we were planning to do on this section as well and that's slated for FY twenty-six for that project.
So that's, that's a great update for us, but that's something we should have on there. Those, that's what people are looking for and it's not your fault, it's, I mean, it's our fault because we're having these conversations, you may know, Richie may know, I may know, the rest of this board may know, the residents need to know. So when we're having these conversations, how can we put this information out there? How can we say, you know, we've taken, we know what's going on, we hear your frustration and we have a plan in place, other than we have it under control, flush your water, we're moving on because they're tired of it and it's, and I understand that, you know, it's, it's like, you know, they joke about it online about, you know, whose turn is it now to have the water main break? And I understand we have, you know, most of the water lines are from the fifties. So yes, we're going to have water main breaks, but I do know every time one, we replace a section in the same area, we'll tend to have another one. And I just want to make sure that we have a plan in place, we're discussing it, we're talking about how we're going to fix this area and we've moved this up, like, was that already on that plan for two thousand and twenty-six or was it like, those are the things that people need to know of what's going on. The other thing that when we're doing these type of things is some people had brown water for a day, someone had it for three or four days and we're telling them to run their water. Water rates in this town are very, very expensive. So is there a way that if somebody was, happened to be on a down area and they're running, I mean, I saw some of the tubs, it was flowing a thing, they just let it run and run and run and it was black. I think that there should be a way that they could contact the town and say, hey, listen, I understand that, you know, something happened, but I shouldn't be on the hook for paying for, you know, a thousand gallons of water. If I'm running it and running it and running it, what happens in the summertime, especially during a heat? When you go up and you're running that, it's the same thing as filling a pool. Now all of a sudden, you go to a higher tier and we're going to penalize people for something they didn't have anything to do with. So now they're going to be paying a higher tier because they had to flush their water. I think that, I don't know if we can do something, but I think we should at least listen to residents that had to go through that to, it's not for you, it's pretty much to the town manager and the rest of us, to say, is there a way that we can put something in that you can show that, you know, every quarter for the last, you know, nine months, you've only used this much, but because of this water main break, you used another thousand gallons. That should be taken into consideration and that should be something that maybe we should look into alleviate those costs of those residents. It's bad enough they had to deal with the, what happened, but they shouldn't be penalized for it. And they shouldn't definitely go to a higher rate because they had to keep running water to get us to that point. And the other areas, it's, you know, we did well getting that information out there. The last one that we had, I just saw and I'm like, it was, people were posting on some social media, I got no water again. And then all of a sudden, the phone calls started coming into all of us. Everybody who got one, it's on a weekend, but I wasn't aware that there was another water main break, you know, and the last thing I want to do is call Richard on a Sunday to say what's happening. So having those links, if you're putting it out on a link and putting on something like that, maybe put in like a copy of it on the website or something to say, here we are, or what's going on, to notify people, because immediately after something that happened that dramatically, they're all thinking the main broke again. And you can understand, it just happened to be something else in another area. So making people comfortable, knowing that we're on it, know we're being responsive, know we're not ignoring them, knowing they're frustrated and understandably frustrated that, you know, I just think we all can do a better job of letting residents know that we hear their frustration, we're working toward a solution. I like Mr. Mackey's idea of having a working group, but we need to do a better job of not just responding after something happens. We need to start really doing a better job of being proactive. If, you know, the solution isn't easy. We don't have, like I said, we went from replacing one and a half miles to now we're doing three and a half miles. The cost is expensive. I understand the reasons behind it. You know, you don't want to replace a water line or dig up an area where you have to coordinate with utility, because if you're going to trench a roadway, everybody remembers thirty-eight, driving up and down and having their coffee on their lap. But then we replaced the water line, we replaced the gas line, we resurfaced the roadway, hopefully there's not going to be a break there for the next twenty years. We have to explain to residents the thought process, why some areas have water breaks and why we're not doing them, like that's not, that hasn't got to a higher level, especially like where we have areas of constant water main breaks. Why, why isn't that like a priority? It is, I know you have an answer, but we, you can tell us, you can tell Richard, we do have to do a better job of communicating that to the residents, what's going on, how we're doing it and that's, and I don't want to tie up all your time doing it, but we have to find a way of coming up with an answer of, I don't know, we put some additional administrative staff to work on that, but we, I mean, this is one of the top priorities in this town. It's a, and water, the cost of water is so high and dealing with brown water is infuriating to residents. I hear them, you hear them, it's not your fault, it's not your workers' fault, you're fixing the problem, but like I said, that's not making them happy. Paying the high, two and a half times what most communities are paying and then still having brown water is a problem. I heard what you said about the flushing. That's an understandable reason, but we have on the website that we're flushing between May and July and there's no update to say, because of the heat, we didn't do it. We should. So if something gets delayed or something happens or if, if something changes, it's understandable. I understand you don't want to be flushing the thing when we already have everybody ask, pulling additional water. The last thing we want to do is be flushing it all out when people need that water. But like I said, that should be something, it makes sense, but share it of why we're not doing it. And like I said, it's communication. We should be proactive, then reactive. And unfortunately, a lot of times these things happen, we react after it happens and they're tired of hearing us give excuses of why. They, they want to know what we're doing to fix it and there's no easy answer, but we should at least be honest with them. There's nothing that's going to happen in the next like five years that's going to fix all our water lines. We can do the best we can, but we should be honest with the residents, tell them what we're doing and how we're doing it and make sure that they, at least some comfort level that we're listening to their concerns and we're trying to do something about it. That's, that's what we really need to do better. So, thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Krabman. I spoke earlier and again, I want to thank you and your staff for doing an incredible job and I also want to thank Mr. Montori and his staff for doing an incredible job. And I also want to thank my colleagues for having to field all the telephone calls.
Thanks, Richard, for answering the questions.
Mr. Chairman, before you end the, can I just bring it to Mr. Montori, you know, the complaints about people that did was that, is there something, could you please comment on that?
When the chairman's done, I was going to just address kind of everyone's.
Okay, thank you.
That's okay.
Okay, and the other thing I want to do, Mr. Montori, if you could send a letter to the Bill Ricker Fire Department for making their pumper truck available to us, we were lucky, there was no fire, because it would be trying to put a fire with a squirt gun, you know. So I'd like to thank the Bill Ricker Fire Department for their involvement, I should say. And that's all I have. So Mr. Montori, I'm going to turn it back over to you.
Sure, if I can just try to wrap it up with answering some of the comments that were made and questions. First, just to, well, it's fresh my mind, if anyone has an issue with the amount of water they used during this time to clear up the brown water, they should reach out to Kevin's office, they can reach out to me and we will look at each individual's issue. We can pinpoint it to the day, try to understand how much was used and then we can take it from there. So anyone that has an issue like that, they should reach out to us as they would with any, you know, if they had a leak in the system, they would reach out to us and we'll see what we can do. So they should absolutely do that. I just want to go back on a couple of things. So we plan to do a leak detection survey of the town this fall. I originally thought it was going to be in the spring, but Kevin plans to do it this fall, will be a leak detection survey of the entire town. You know, it's important to know. You know, it's important to note that the information, and that Mr. Crapman had mentioned about what work we're doing in town, and he brought up an excellent point in getting the information out to the residents. It is in our five-year capital plan. Our capital plan is on the website, it's within the town budget that we present every year. But as Mr. Crapman was talking about it, what I'll work with Kevin to do tomorrow to make sure it's in a more prominent place by division of the DPW on the DPW website. So when you go on the, into the budget, and you look at the five-year plan underwater, we list water distribution, I'll give you an example for FY '26, design of William G. Drive neighborhood, Cardigan Road, design of Cardigan Road neighborhood, construction of William G. Drive neighborhood, construction of Cardigan Road neighborhood, construction of Shawshin Street, Beach Street, Foster Road, Patton Road, and then construction of Main Street tile over. That's all on the '26. That's an example of the detail that the DPW puts in their five-year plan. Mr. Crapman is correct, we need to do a better job of getting that information out. We'll put that in a more prominent location within the water division section of the website, sewer division for theirs, storm water for theirs. But the information is there, it's just, we need to make it easier for residents to find. You know, to talk about some of the work that we have done, you know, we have $3.4 million in the budget for a bond issue this year that we will spend on three miles of road. It's projected to be $3.4 million over the next five years. That can obviously and will be looked at each year to increase that amount, to go beyond the three miles of pipe. But we need to balance everything against a few things, right? You have to balance it against how much work do you want to undertake in a given year in a community? Three miles of pipe is a lot of pipe, okay? You're also paving roads, you're doing drainage work, you're doing sidewalk work. We need to look at all of that to make sure the staff has the capacity to undertake it, because the last thing you want to do is fund projects that don't take place, right? You want to fund projects to show taxpayers you're doing the work. So we need to balance that. The other thing is, we want to make sure we're balancing the rates. This year, we had an 11.5% rate increase, okay? You want to make sure that you're funding water distribution as we have been, hopefully more, but you also need to pay for the operations at the treatment plant, distribution costs, equipment costs, all the other costs that we have. We need to, we're borrowing and spending funds on the treatment plant, tanks, all of that goes into the rates. Again, it's just a balance of how we want to approach it. Over the last, since 2012, we went back to want to see, because I don't want people to think we're not doing anything. Since 2012, town, the town has funded $23.2 million in water main replacement projects. If you add the Opera Funding in, that this board voted to use all of the Opera Funds, there are towns that still haven't spent their Opera Funds. This board, within a week of getting notification of Opera Funding, approved $9.3 million to be spent, all on water distribution projects. The total amount that this board and town meeting has approved since 2012 is $32.5 million of water main projects only. That doesn't include the, we spent on the Astle Street tank, other tank work, equipment for the department, $14.2 million that was spent on the water treatment plant, that's not included in that 32. The Board of Selectmen, the Select Board, Town Meeting, and the administration has invested in the system. That's a significant amount of money. Just to give you an idea on water main replacement in the town, from 2003 to 2009, the town spent $3.7 million on water main replacement. That gives you an idea. Okay? So I just don't want anybody to think we're not doing anything. We are meeting, we already started discussing improvement, improving, getting information out to the residents. We will update the website, we'll look at that this week. We will talk to staff about how information is provided to improve upon that. But that's just to kind of address some of the things that were brought up tonight that we have been looking at. It is a system that is old, we recognize that, but we need, we can do things better, and we will. And everything you said tonight, we'll take, we'll take into consideration and start discussions tomorrow.
All right, thank you, Mr. Montori.
Thank you, Mr. Hardeman.
Thank you, Kevin, you know, you gave us education on.
I had two things. One, I wanted to talk to Mr. Ryder's point about the Astle Street tank being offline. You know, I know, he knows that had that tank been online, that would have provided more of a buffer, would have provided more pressure and water in the system throughout the course of the break, would have basically bought us a little more time. But those are things that we can't predict, and we can't forego maintenance on an important piece of infrastructure like that, just in case something were to happen. And the other thing I want to do is, I really do want to express my gratitude to my staff. You know, it takes a village, I feel that I've got some of the best staff around, and they step up, they stepped up all week, they step up consistently. Doesn't matter what the problem is, doesn't matter if it's on the water side, sewer side, highway, forestry, they all work as a team. They worked in units of, you know, forestry guys, working with highway guys, working with water guys, working with sewer guys, all week, and it was a great team. So, you know, I'm thankful to be a part of that team, and I'm thankful, you know, for the board's support in being able to have everything that we have and the resources available to us, you know, to address issues like this. So thank you.
All right, Mr. Hardeman, thank, I mean, and thanks for the update, because the only thing I know about water is it's wet. So now we're on to Town Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I only have one item, and that's Town Council's invoice. And there's one invoice for July 1st through July 15th that's been reviewed. I recommend the approval of payment and the amount of $3,272.50. Second.
Okay, we have motion by Ms. Wellman, second by Mr. Mackey, all those in favor sitting by saying aye.
Aye.
And according to the agenda, we have no minutes, is that correct, Mr. Ryder?
That's correct.
Okay. Board member reports, we'll start off with Mr. Ryder.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, myself and Mr. Mackey, we had an Economic Development Committee meeting. I think it went well. We set up the chair, vice chair, and clerk, and we have another meeting scheduled, we have the mission statement, we have another meeting scheduled for August 14th. So we'll be having that meeting and moving forward with, you know, each member's plans. It was great, we had Mr. Montori, we had Mr. Sadwick and Alex Lotta was at the meeting, providing us with some updates, and we'll have a path moving forward. Hopefully, we can make some headway. So looking forward to that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Ms. Wellman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't have any meeting reports, we have NIMCOG last month, and we're not meeting again until September. But for future agenda item, perhaps, or in this future report, the housing bond bill passed this week, and that allows ADU by right, and also looks at town land for housing. And so that was a conversation that we had questions about. So I think it would be great, it's going to take a while for municipalities to unpack all the pieces of that legislation and have a full understanding of what residents now might be able to do, what their process might be for ADUs, and all the other implications. And so it would be great if we could start doing that work together to start understanding what that means for the town. And so that's just a request for a future agenda item.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Mackey.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Ryder covered the Economic Development Committee, so I only have two other items. First is August 17th is the Tuxbury Veteran Services BBQ at the Senior Center from 11:00 to 2:00. That does require pre-registration, pre-registration. So please reach out to Lisa, our Veteran Service Officer, if you'd like to register for that. The other piece is, we have a, our oldest resident in town, who is 105, Ms. Mary Alice Kazaza, her birthday is coming up. For those of you who don't know, she has worked in the town for a number of years, she worked in the treasurer's office, she was an election warden, and she'll be celebrating her 105th birthday next weekend. So we'll be putting together, there's a golden cane, I believe, Mr. Montori, as well as a certificate that's going around with signatures now. So wanted to wish her a happy birthday. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Crapman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The local regional authority did not meet the last month, but I have been in conversation with them. One of the things that the council on aging and the, in the senior center was looking for was an additional van. We didn't have one on our list to get it, but through negotiations we did with the town manager, the director of the council, we were able to get a new van for them. I want to thank the town manager for helping with that, because we had a license and get all those things and add it to our system, but the LRTA came forward, they found a way to do it, and they were looking for a smaller van to make further trips, because some of the seniors, the vans that we have are larger, and they weren't, it was something that they use quite a bit to go on local trips, because they hold so many people. But they were looking for something a little bit smaller that could handle taking people to further doctor's appointments and those type of things, that holds five or six, and we were able to get that for them. I went to the council meeting today to talk to them, they had their, they had their plates in place, they sent it over to the LRTA, so hopefully, this is going to come online. And I know, I think they were putting, posting out for an additional driver. So if anybody's interested in that, I hope they look at that. Our next meeting is until September 10th, but 9/11 is coming up very quickly. We're coordinating putting that event together. We're going to have the memorial, it'll happen, you know, 7 o'clock as usual. I spoke with the swinging seniors down there, I talked to the people at the high school to get the people together, where I spoke with members of the committee, the 9/11 committee, just coordinating it. I reached out to the sheriff's office to see if we can get the tent, which I want to thank the sheriff's office in the past. Last year, they brought us over the tent, and it poured. And it was like, it was a godsend, because we had a couple of hundred people there. People always show up for that. So we'll have something out on the website shortly, but I know it's beginning of August, no one's thinking about that, but we will have information out that will be shared prior to our next meeting. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you, Mr. Crapman. I don't have any committee retorts, but I do have some correspondence that we received in regards to Chief Brian Farnum. There's a letter we received from the First Baptist Church. Dear Deputy Chief Brian Farnum, I am writing to express the gratitude of the First Baptist Church of Tuxbury. On June 6th of this year, one of our parishioners and her four children were unfairly evicted from the Tuxbury residents inn. Want to explain to you that she and her family had been staying there for over a month, you quickly intervened. Through swift action and dialogue, you were able to help the family remain there until they were ready to move. Deputy Chief Farnum, these are wonderful things you do behind the scenes. This is what community policing is all about. The First Baptist Church is grateful for your work here in Tuxbury. Thank you again, from the depths of our heart. Please know that we are making a difference in the lives of the people here in Tuxbury, and your good work is not in vain. Blessing Simone de Mas, pastor of the First Baptist Church. So that's kind of good news versus getting all the bad news, yeah?
That's some good news.
Okay. Next up, we, we have the board member reports, so our regular meeting is going to move into executive session. We will be discussing collective bargaining, we will conduct no more business after that, we will adjourn. So can I have a motion to move into executive session?
Some of.
Second. I have a motion by Mr. Ryder, second by Mr. Mackey. We have a roll call vote. Mr. Crapman, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Mackey?
Aye.
Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
Mr. Ryder?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye as well. We are now in executive sessions.